The agenda this afternoon. First up is a parking lot for lease agreement. Deputy City Administrator Andy Kitrow is going to handle that for us. Mr. Kitrow?
Hi, everybody. I am going to take the lead, and if there's any additional questions, Laura Hay is on Zoom to answer some of the nitty-gritty.
Okay.
So Faith Baptist Parking Lot Agreement, this is the parking lot that is adjacent to our Lake Street Playground. This agreement had originally expired a couple of years ago, and this is just us reestablishing a relationship with the church and us being able to have access to that parking lot. That parking lot is highly utilized during the summer, if there's like youth basketball leagues, and then also whenever anybody rents the park, they park in this space. I believe in your packet, there is a map that kind of indicates what's part of the parking lot we are defining as our leased area. And I'm here to take any questions.
Okay. Questions from the council? Is Mr. Boda on the?
Yes.
I have no questions.
Okay, got you. Thanks. We have consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Mrs. Nichols, could you move that to the agenda? Thank you. Next up, we have an ordinance to amend the Salisbury City Code to combine the Housing Board of Appeals, Adjustments and Appeals, and the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and the Board of Zoning Appeals into a board known as the Board of Appeals. Okay, that was a mouthful. Who's going to handle that one for us?
Brian, is that you or Laura? I think it's Laura. Laura, are you taking point on this?
I am happy to. I certainly can.
Wonderful. We've got Laura or Brian, so for either one.
Okay.
But Brian, if you want, just come up to the table, too.
Anthony and Brian.
How's everybody doing?
Good. Okay, Laura, do you want to walk us through it?
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So this is an ordinance that combines three of the city boards. It combines the Housing Board, the Building Board, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Right now, the Board of Zoning Appeals meets fairly often, but the other boards have not met in recent past, and we've had various issues on staffing and getting people who want to be on those boards, and they're just not utilized very often. And so the thought was is that if we could create an overall Board of Appeals who mainly hears the Board of Zoning Appeals cases, but is also able to hear the other cases from the other boards to the extent that they're needed, that way we'd be able to keep it fully staffed and operational. So what you have in front of you is an ordinance that does that. You can see that it's very long. The reason why it's so long is that everywhere in the code where it references Board of Zoning Appeals, we've had to go through and essentially track change it to take out the word zoning. It's actually interesting that the code had some discrepancies where it's actually referring to a Board of Appeals already, so those sections didn't need to be changed at all. That's the reason why it's so long. We've also gone through, having a Board of Appeals is required by statute, so I've gone through and I've attempted to mirror our code to the state code a little bit more concisely. And then I've also corrected some of the issues in terms of how long people have to appeal decisions. It was different depending on department and where the appeal originated, and so we've attempted with this to make it a uniform 21 days for all appeals. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if anyone has. Brian is well-versed with it as well, so he could certainly answer them.
Anything you'd want to add to that, Brian, before we open the floor for discussion?
The one thing I would like to add is I believe that by compiling these boards, we're actually going to end up with a better board that makes use of the individuals that have allowed, that have presented themselves to serve, architects, engineers, by consolidating them into one board. I think it makes it a stronger board.
Okay. Questions from the council? Mr. Boda?
And I was looking through, I didn't see, are we keeping the number of members of the board? Is it going to be like a five to seven-member board?
Yeah, so we have put in there, I believe it's, it is five members, and we can have up to two alternates, and we also put in there some preference that would be given to certain professionals who want to be on the board, but it should be at least five members.
Yeah, because I remember a piece of the, because I used to serve on the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and one of the seats that was on there, they had a health professional, they had a realtor, architect, but they also had seats that were specific for residents. So I was just making, are we keeping that, like a city resident, just a regular resident of the city in there, or are we doing all professional seats?
So the composition of the board, it's found on, starting at line 1660, and we have preference that's given to a building professional, architect, engineer, a tenant, a property owner, and an attorney, as well as potential members that have demonstrated a special interest or specific knowledge in public health.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question or comment? I sort of have a similar question. During the transition period, my concern would be, do we have people that have served, are we going to have a person that has served on the, one of the other previous boards so there's some continuity? And I also had a question about the number of people and the number maybe of alternates, if that should, if you had considered increasing that at all, just to make sure that we have representation that represents at least a portion of the three previous boards.
Well, for your first question, we've invited everybody that is currently serving to put in another application, so those are due this week, so that'll give us enough time for, I think, the March meeting, which will be the first time this board gets together in its new form, to reappoint some members of those boards. And I think many of them will reapply, some already have. I don't have an answer to the, I'll yield to Brian on the number of alternates and the size of the board.
So the Board of Appeal, the Board of Zoning Appeals currently is five members. I'm not too, I'm not too aware with the current size of the housing adjustments, and the Building Board hasn't met in over four years, it's just usually never a need. The, it's been pretty standard practice to have five with two alternates. Going down to one board, if the council saw fit to go to seven members, more than five with different alternates. I think the potential is there to have enough members, however, as we've expressed before, currently it's been difficult to staff these current boards to find five members to serve. So I know the Board of Appeals is currently at three, so.
We're the legislative arm, so we're not going to get into the operations piece, that's not where we belong. But I just, just out of, from a business point of view, just thinking about structure, I just, if you look at that and you're happy with the decision, that's fine with me.
Then we can look into it.
Okay. Okay, we have consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Nichols? Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have the presentation, I always look forward to this, presentation of the FY22 Audit and Financial Statements, and Finance Director Keith Cordy is going to lead us through that with help. Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Today, we have Tim Sawyer, Barbara King Thornton and Company on Zoom to present the city's FY2022 audit report. And before we get started, I'd like to remind you that soon, just in a few short months, we will be in budget sessions where we will further analyze and dissect the statements. So that's just coming around the corner. And with that said, I will turn things over to Mr. Sawyer, who's on Zoom.
Thank you, Keith. I just wanted to let you know that also with me today is Joe Manfree, who's an audit supervisor here with us, and he's the lead auditor on the city's audit, and he's going to take you through the audit results package, and then we'll have some closing comments and answer any questions that we may have. So Joe, let you go ahead and do the audit results.
Thank you, Tim. Good afternoon, everybody. As Tim stated, I'm Joe Manfree, supervisor on the audit. So without further ado, let's get to this. So just some audit summaries, fieldwork, can everybody see this, by the way?
It's a little difficult, but.
Oh, yeah, you can blow it up a little bit.
You can blow it up a little bit, that would.
A little bit, okay. Let me get at a presentation view then. That better?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So audit summary, like I said, fieldwork was started in November 7, 2022, and wrapped up December 6. We're issuing an unmodified, or what is also known as a clean opinion, on the audit opinions of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, aggregate remaining fund information, this is a long one, the report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance, and over other matters based on the audit of the financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards, and the report of compliance for each major program, and on internal control over compliance required by uniform guidance. And that last one is for single audit. Since the city spends over $750,000 in federal expenditures, they're required to get a single audit done, and this year it was over the SAFER program, which is a program that is designed to hire firefighters. During the course of our audit, we kind of looked over the internal control systems surrounding processing transactions for the city, really, this just means how cash goes in and out of the city, whether that's cash receipts, disbursements, payroll. We're pleased to announce that everything that we have looked at, looked like it was designed to operate and was operating effectively. As part of our audit for this year, we tested 40 expenditure transactions and 40 water and sewer billings, and we found no issues with the sample that was selected. We assisted with the preparation of certain journal entries. These are really just for the pension and the OPEB liabilities and related to FERLS, sorry about that. And that's just to be within accordance of GASB 68 and 75, and this is a state pension The next tab, I have some financial highlights. This is your cash, cash restricted, and investment pools and receivables for the year. The 2022 column is the blue column, and the 2021 is the orange column. So if we look, cash and investment pools for 2022 increased about $500,000 to 22 point, well, about 23 million.
Joe, could I interrupt you? Could you just blow that up a little, one more?
A little bit, yep, absolutely. Is that better?
Oh, yeah, now we're okay.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, sorry about that. A little weird playing with Adobe. Restricted cash and investment pools increased about 4.2 million to 23 million this year, and receivables dipped down a little bit to about 7.8 million compared to 8.15 million in the previous year. The next tab we have is your capital assets and your bonds and your net position. Capital assets decreased about 2.7 million, but this is largely just due to depreciation outweighing the additions for the year. And bonds, notes, and leases payable went down about 3 million to 97.1 million. And then the net position, which is always good to see, increased about 7.7 million to 89.5 million this year. This next slide right here is your governmental fund balances. So this just breaks it out by non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and then unassigned, which is, unassigned is available for any kind of expenditure of the cities. If you see non-spendable, about the same as last year. Non-spendable is really just prepaid and like inventory, which I think majority of yours is based off of inventory. Restricted balances went up to 14 million opposed to 6.5 million, but this is really just bond proceeds that are restricted to, you know, what the bond was issued for. Committed balances, about 3.6 million compared to 3 million. Assigned, 1.1 to 1.4. And lastly, assigned balances of 12.2 million compared to 12.6 million in the previous Governmental revenues here, it's broken out by taxes, other revenues, intergovernmental revenues, which is like grants, state aid, and then charges for services. Taxes increased about 1.6 million to 32 million this year. Other revenues increased about 1.2 million. Intergovernmental revenues decreased about 2.2 million, and that's really just because last year there was a lot of COVID money received, and as we're getting out of the pandemic, there's less and less of those funds being received. So that's the reason for the dip there. And charges for services increased about 900,000 to 5.7 million. Next one is governmental expenditures. It's a little bit of a bigger slide, so I'll try to zoom in a little bit more.
That helps. Good, thank you.
Really nothing too notable here. Everything was fairly consistent with previous years. Yeah, so just kind of scroll through that and let you guys see it, and everything was fairly, fairly consistent. And then we get down to the water and sewer operating results. Operating revenues for the Water and Sewer Fund increased about 3.3 million to 19.3 million in 2022, while operating expenses remained fairly consistent at 13.5. Non-operating revenues, however, increased about $3 million, and this is largely related to forgiveness of loan proceed, principal, and grants. Non-operating revenues, 963 to 520,000, and you had a net change in position of $3 million to positive 3 million. Zoom back out real quick. So these are just some required communications. I'm not going to go over all of them, I'm just going to go over them in brief. The scope and timing of our audit is consistent with what was planned by management in our planning memorandum that was issued August 8, 2022. The responsibilities for our audit and, you know, our procedures are included in our engagement letter, which was also dated August 8, 2022. We have issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2022. The city has not adopted any new accounting policies for the year. We are not aware of any significant accounting policies used by the city that could be controversial or lack guidance. There were no uncorrected misstatements for the year. And our proposed adjusting entries, those pension and OPEB entries that we had proposed, management has reviewed those, approved them, and they are reflected in the financial statements. There was no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we identified. We are not aware of any fraud or illegal acts, and we are not aware of any matters that lack professional judgment that would impair our independence. So with that, that's the presentation. Are there any questions?
Not really. Were there any, was there anything substantive regarding the Fed money in terms of how it impacted the financials, other than the revenue?
There was. We had budgeted, I think, to put to use approximately 1 million of about 4.8 that we expected to receive before the end of the year. It did not arrive, therefore, it's good, next year.
Next year, you get it.
That'll get it. So that 4.8 is going to be 23, sorry.
So another clean audit. Not to be, see, you've established a baseline of perfect, and, which is kind of hard, but I'm glad that, I'm glad that it looks, looks the way it does. It's a great job, Joe. Thank you and your team, and Tim, we appreciate it.
Thank you. I would like to just also mention, because we have here as our captive audience for a couple of seconds, I just wanted to say that, you know, working with the city is always a pleasure, and Keith and his team do an outstanding job of getting us all the information. You know, we've switched more to, we're doing more of the audit work remotely, so, you know, any other requests that we have from the audit team for uploading additional information and all, they get to us extremely quick, so I just wanted to point that out as well, too, so we couldn't get everything all finished and wrapped up here by the end of the year if it wasn't for the assistance we get from that.
Great, thank you, Tim. Questions from the council? Mr. Boda or comments?
Just, once again, great job to Keith and his team and the whole staff for consistently providing another clean audit and just day in and day out, serving our citizens by handling their money appropriately. So I think that's much appreciated.
Angela, questions or comments?
No, I think, you know, we're very grateful for Keith and his team, and it's always remarkable that you can keep all this straight. And it's, and I often do ask, you know, when we're brought things financially, I'd be the one, "Look, did Keith look at this? What did he think?" And it's nice to know that your stamp is on it, and your work is well-known, and thank you very much.
Michelle?
Just want to reiterate, thank you, and you guys do an amazing job.
Now, I, this is my seventh, sixth, six or seven audits, and from the beginning, everything got better every year. And your team has done, I know it takes a leader, but a good leader surrounds himself with great people, and you obviously have done that. So thank you, thank you again.
Thank you, guys. We have a great staff.
Yep.
Very fortunate.
Yeah, that's good. All right. If there's no other questions, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it. Look forward to, we are going to do next year's budget pretty soon, I just realized that.
We still have the official process, right, too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, meaning of.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Still want to be shocked with that.
Yeah. Good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, if anybody does come up with any questions, just let Keith know, and you get ahold of us, and we'll get you an answer.
Great, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, Tim. Thank you, Joe.
Have a great night.
Everybody have a good night.
You, too.
Thanks, guys.
That's one, you know, that's, it's really funny, because as a former executive in the business world, I always used to shudder when it comes up to the audit, but I don't do that now, and that's a good sign. All right. Any, any comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I guess we'll save, we'll save it for, like you said, and it'll be budget time very shortly.
Yeah.
And we'll really.
Oh, we'll dig in.
And analyze things.
Yeah.
Much more detail.
Yeah, and if, if one of the things that I think we're, we're going to look at is, I know we had a, we had help this year, and we're not going to get help next year. So that has got to be the highlight from my perspective, is, look, we made it through the tough times. Now, are we set up, and I think we've, we've talked about it on several other occasions, about the concern about, is it sustainable? Are we able to sustain this? And that's going to be a focus that we're going to have to deal with. Okay, time for, let's see, so we should adjourn this meeting. We'll save the comments for the end of, after the special meeting. So if I could, let me take my glasses off so I can see, I want to entertain a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Mrs. Gregory. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. The legislative agenda is adopted by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion and a second to accept the FY22 audit as presented. Mrs. Gregory?
Yes, oh, second, sorry.
Ms. Blake. Questions or discussions? Mr. Boda?
Like I said, great job to Keith and his team, and just really proud of the work that they do, and ethically and efficiently handling the people's money.
Thank you. Ms. Blake, questions or comments?
None.
Okay.
None.
None. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the approval of the FY22 audit as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. The FY22 audit is approved by a vote of four to zero. That brings us to the end of the special meeting. We'll now have comments, administrative comments first?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'd like to echo everyone's comments. A big thank you to Keith and the entire finance team. I don't think we realize how lucky we are to have the rock star team we do in finance, so please extend that to the team, Keith. I just wanted to mention that on Saturday, the Vulnerable Populations Task Force had our holiday outreach event, One Stop Shop at Y-Hi, and had a great, great event, gave out tons of food, resources, gave 35 vaccines, and we have created a newly engaged partnership with the Department of Social Services. So they were actually out on site, providing resources and filling out applications with residents, and that's the first time, I think, they've really ever been out on the street. That's a really big win. So that group, the Vulnerable Populations Task Force, continues to engage in new partnerships and deliver resources to the community, two and a half years into, you know, the COVID world. So still a need, certainly. And lastly, just an FYI to the world out there, that we will be closed on Friday as an extra day to our employees, which the state followed, followed us in closing for the day, so just wish everybody have a.
Always like to lead the state.
That's right.
Lead the way.
Mr. Boda?
Not much, just Merry Christmas, everybody, and we'll see after the first of the year or downtown at New Year's Eve.
Thank you. Angela?
Merry Christmas. I'm sure everyone's going to have a very peaceful and relaxing day. I know I am. I hope Santa brings me my roller skates. I've asked for purple. I've asked for purple roller skates, I pray I get them. But obviously, we're still a critical site for blood. Please, if you're healthy enough, donate blood.
Michelle?
Just happy holidays. First night of Hanukkah was last night, so happy Hanukkah to all of my Jewish friends and family. And also, just want to remind folks, get your vaccines, you know, get that, get that done for the holidays. You want everybody to be safe.
I've got a few things. First, I'll, second, as I normally do, the, the blood, the blood requirement, we need, we need blood desperately. It's been that way now for almost a year. So if you are, if you are capable, please donate. I had the privilege of attending the groundbreaking for AdoptaBlock's new building down on Benny Street, and great crowd, great enthusiasm, and it's amazing, and I've said before, and I'll say it again, our greatest asset are our people. And the Emmanuel Church under the AdoptaBlock leader, Mark Thompson, who is one of the most active guys I know, is going to be able to do a much greater effectiveness, because they're going to be in the heart. because they're going to be in the heart of the community they serve, and I think that's wonderful. And to everyone out there, have a tremendous holiday season, no matter what you, what you celebrate, we celebrate with you, and we look forward to seeing you in the new year, and we thank everybody for what they've done for the city. So thank you all, and we are adjourned.